Hello, everyone. It looks like we have about 56 people and Mr. Rosen just stepped away from his computer. I'm sure he'll be back in just a couple of minutes. Um, I want to introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Palencheck. I'm the superintendent. Mr. Rosen's joining me today. I'm going to be presenting. Uh, and just to let you know a little bit of the format for today, everybody is muted. I was just looking at the comment boxes that are here. And um, I'm going to present to you. What our school planning for reopening is, we actually have four plans. And along with that, what school will look like, what will be required of the students. Can be expected of the staff and what the mitigation strategies are that we're going to have in place in order to reopen. And I'll get into some more detail about that. Also want to emphasize that, um, you know, parents do have the ability to make some choices. And want to give you the information that you need to make an informed choice for your family. I know that, but for the fact that we'd be in these current conditions with the pandemic. Parents wouldn't be asking about e-school or some of these other options, or, you know, just concerned about the normal everyday routines and practices. In schools, we understand that these questions and concerns are coming because of the current situation. We just want you to know that, um, you know, we want you to make sure you're making the best decision for your family. We'll be here when all the dust clears and this Moser joined us, who's our assistant superintendent as well. And what we'll do towards the end, if you have questions, um, you know, ask you to listen to the presentation first, because many of your questions may be answered. You don't put them into the chat and Mr. Rosen will moderate them for us, read them, and we'll be able to respond. Hopefully, I'll be about 20 minutes or so, give or take, which will leave us the majority of the time for our answer question and answer. So I want to thank you first for joining us. We know that, you know, not every question is going to be answered. So we are going to create an FAQ that will go out to the fa- um, to the parents and one for faculty and one that's specific to the students based on their developmental age. Um, I want you to all know too, that we've been working on planning since the beginning of, um, really the time that school was closed. We were thinking about what might happen. We've also been, um, waiting for a lot of guidelines to come from the Department of Health and the Department of Education. And we have to use these guidelines. I'll explain more as we get into it. We have a PowerPoint. So if you bear with me for a second. To make sure I'm screen sharing this as, um. Just hold for one sec. Okay, um, reading. Okay. Sorry, everybody here is going to see my screens. I'm waiting to get the PowerPoint up. I didn't have it. I believe I had it loaded in the back, but yes, okay. 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 Does everybody have the PowerPoint? It was giving me some trouble yesterday, so I tried to get into it a different way. Kathy and George.
You have it.
Yep. So, um. Okay, so I explained our format for today. One of the things that we all have to consider with our students returning back to school is that they've experienced what we can think of as a trauma. They left school one day and all of a sudden they didn't come back. That wasn't anything that any of them expected. And we know especially our middle school students really look forward to a lot of the things that happen in the spring. To bring the year to a close, to celebrate, you know, getting ready to move from eighth grade to ninth grade. For our students that are, you know, transitioning even into the middle school now, coming from Lindtown. So we know that it wasn't what they expected, which is going to leave them confused and frustrated. The stay-at-home order left them feeling more isolated. And all of these social emotional concerns are important for us to keep at the forefront of our mind, because we are in fact teaching children, but we're teaching them more than just the academics. We're also helping guide them through the process of becoming young adults. And, um, our teachers will be prepared for that as well as our counselors. And that's why the American Academy of Pediatrics does recommend that students come back to school if it can be done safely, just because of all of the experiences that students. Will have in school that will help them in their own development. So we know that's happening and we know that's, that's front and center of our minds. And for many of you as parents, it certainly is a concern, um, just with what you've experienced with your own children. For reopening schools, we know that we had to do this, but this is the reality of when we got the guidance that we needed. And the direction for what could be possible with the reopening of school as well as how to go about doing that. And I will tell you now, there are still very, um, a number of unanswered questions. That leave all superintendents in a very tenuous position and feeling frustrated by that. But we are working diligently to get answers to those questions. And for that reason. It's important to say that what we plan to do might change, given the conditions here in Union County across the state in the region. So we have to be ready to pivot into another plan if that is what we're ordered to do, or that's really what the safest thing for us to do would be. Questions about whether masks would be required were answered back in July 1, but we've gotten updated. Guidance on what that means from the Department of Health, but from the Department of Education, what that looks like in schools. Because general guidance to the public, but then what can be occurring within schools is a little different and that can be confusing to people. Everyone will need to wear a mask when they return to school or face covering. We're, we're asking students to wear masks. Staff may have face shields. We will work with students who may need some accommodations with that. But there, that is something that we're requiring. It's one of the best mitigation techniques that is out there. And we're doing this to protect everybody's health and safety. School districts did not receive specific guidelines on what would be required in their health and safety plans until July 16. And even since then, um, there have been other orders and then orders revised for schools that have come. So this has left us, um, you know, envisioning what school would look like. But having to do that with plans that have become in some ways more restrictive than possible. And so school districts that have had their plans approved prior to any of these changes have to have them re-approved. Each time, um, something needs to change because of conditions that are outside of our control. These are the requirements for reopening school. So we need to have a board-approved health and safety plan. And, um, as I said, anytime anything changes, it has to be re-approved. The board also has to approve the emergency instructional time template. And that speaks to how we're able to account for 180 days of school with 900 hours of instruction for elementary and 994 secondary. And, um, that was much-needed guidance that did not come until July 6th, because right now the PA code states that schools. Must have 180 days and those respective instructional hours. Last spring, the legislator voted in Act 13, which relieved schools of that obligation. And we were able to have remote instruction and flex what was counted. Attendance didn't need to be taken. All of these things were the spring version of this. Moving into the 2021 school year, it is much different. In order to account for those hours, we must take attendance. Instruction must be provided by a certified teacher. And all provisions of FAP need to be met for those students with special education needs. So this is different and, um, we're all facing the challenges of if we are ordered to go back to remote. Or in any version of a hybrid that a school does, how to get those accountability measures in place, because this is reported to the state. And it is something that they closely monitor and it is tied to our funding, um, state subsidy that we received from, um. The, from Pennsylvania. Outside of a law, um, passing to relieve us of that, again, we do need to follow that. Our guidelines, um, and recommendations that we have incorporated into our health and safety plan are coming from these various entities. And it's important to say that, um, you know, at times it may seem like there's conflicting guidelines coming out from. The Department of Health and then what schools are able to do, but please understand the while all this is available on the web, it depends upon where you look to find it. So we will be posting this information on our website. So parents have some ease to see exactly what it is that we're working from. And have some better understanding of the origins. The Lewisburg area school district is committed to providing a rigorous education for students. And I want to emphasize that regular attendance is going to be taken and expected from students. Online and remote options have challenges, but we do have ways to be able to work through that. I want to share with you, um, what our reopening plans are as of right now, unless the conditions change, as I said. First, we would have in-person school. It would be heavily modified and adapted for the social distancing that is required. Everyone is required to wear masks or face coverings and this will be enforced. We recently learned from legal counsel that masking can be enforced. Health and safety plan, the health and safety plan draft, which was reviewed by a team of administrators, staff members and representatives from. The Union County Public Health and Safety Department, Geisinger Medical Center and Evangelical Hospital. Occurred on the 22nd and we have some revisions to add to that plan, but nothing will be eliminated. We just may have some additions. From those individuals' recommendations as well as anything else that might come along from the Department of Health or the Department of Education. So parents do have an option, and that is to enroll in our Lewisburg area school district e-school for virtual learning. This e-school is in a partnership with the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit. It is the program that many area school districts are using. It's an online curriculum facilitated by certified teachers. As of right now. Lewisburg area school district would have vendor-provided teachers, but if we have an enrollment of at least 15 to 20% of the students. In grades K through 12, we'd be able to reassign a teacher to, um, teach that section. That teacher wouldn't teach kids in person, but would be that virtual teacher. For the middle school, we would need a similar percentage to have our teachers assigned to, as the e-school teacher. And because of certifications, this may be a little bit more complicated at the high school where some could be taught by. Our, our high school teachers and others may have to be taught by the vendor-provided teacher. It's important to state that not every elective and related arts special might be able to be offered for those high school students. So for any parents that have students both at the middle school and high school, I just wanted to make sure I'm presenting that information to you. The next two plans are the hybrid plan and the remote plan. The remote plan would only be used if schools are ordered closed again. The hybrid plan has students in grades K to five returning to school, but spread across the four schools for even greater social distancing. Students in the middle school and high school would have remote online teaching. This would occur in a synchronous schedule where teachers would meet with their students each day to provide instruction virtually through Google Meet or another platform. Attendance would be taken in each class and students would receive grades. Lewisburg area school district will move to this plan if the conditions in the region change. There are logistical challenges to teachers providing remote instruction to a cohort of students while instructing another cohorts of students in a class at the same time. As we see some other school districts, um, implementing a hybrid with two students and for two days. And then another set of students in for two days and those three days out would be remote learning. With our current resources and, and resources not just being, um, the technology that we have, but also that would be personnel and the structure of our. Contracts with the teachers, that this isn't something that we're able to do seamlessly, um, right now. But if we're, if the conditions are such that we need to do that, we certainly are working on that plan to be able to execute that. But it would look different than two days in, two days out. So if you are a parent of any children in elementary school, just know that your children will either be in school for in-person learning. Or for hybrid, if we have to move to that, that the children would be returning to school if they're in K to five. Um, I do understand also that some school districts are providing students with the option to zoom into class. And we're in the process of getting school board policy into place for any live streaming. I would caution our community to consider the potential interruptions to instruction as well as the high bar of accountability with the number of required hours. And days of school. A hybrid isn't our recommendation at this time because of those reasons. Here's additional and information about, um. The LS, L A S D E school. So parents have been asking a lot of questions and I know that Ms. Moser is fielding them as quickly as she can. One of the benefits is the student remains our student. So if conditions change and the parent wants the child to return back to in-school instruction. They're still enrolled with us. So that can happen seamlessly. We know what the curriculum is that the teachers are using. So we can match that up and, and align the students more appropriately when they return back into in-school. They can participate in our extracurricular activities, clubs and activities. They're eligible for district services. They would receive a report card from the school district. And if a diploma, if there would be a graduating senior, students receive instruction from certified teachers. And the parents would still receive all of the district communications. There are also benefits to the school district in that we stay connected with the families. And as opposed to a cyber charter school that has a cost benefit to the district if the parent selects our e-school. And again, if we have enough people interested in that, we can look to shift to have our teachers be the teacher of record for the e-school. And it, many parents have shared that, you know, that's what they want. They want our teachers, um, but they want that virtual environment for, for their own needs. I want to give you a little bit more information about other options that are out there for parents. And again, this is so that you can make an informed decision. And, and maybe perhaps ask the right questions if you're investigating this so that you, you have what you need to make that decision. So there are charter and cyber charter schools as well as private schools. Brick and mortar charter schools are likely following the same guidelines that PDE, although oftentimes they're, they're a bit more relaxed for the charter schools. In terms of all the social distancing, masking, face coverings, and some of those requirements that I'll be sharing in just a couple of minutes. Um, the tuition for a charter school or cyber charter is paid by the school district. But the tuition is somewhere between 15 to $24,000 for a year, depending upon the student's grade level and if they have, um, an IEP and have special needs. Private school tuition would be covered by the parent. With that tuition coming from the district, going to the charter school, that comes out of this year's operating budget. So it's funds being diverted from our programming and the operations of our district in order to do that. But that is what we're obligated to do if that's what a parent chooses. Certified teachers, so charter schools are required to have 75% of their teachers certified in Pennsylvania. Private schools may, they don't have a requirement by the Department of Education, but they have their own requirements based on their independent charters. Of how they want to operate their school. I do want to say that in many cases, most of these institutions have certified teachers and they, they may not be certified in Pennsylvania. But the difference between a public school in Pennsylvania and a cyber charter, a charter or a private school is that it, the requirement of a Pennsylvania certification. Mitigation requirements, I spoke about that. It's definitely a question to ask. They, they're recommended for private schools, but not required. So if, if one's looking at that, it's, it's something certainly to ask what would the mitigation requirements be, just so you have that information. Enrollment, the student is no longer enrolled with Lewisburg area school district, so they are withdrawn. And if they want to come back, they have to reregister. Our charter students can participate in some activities in a limited fashion that are offered, but, um, our private school students would not be able to participate in any Lewisburg activities. Homeschooling is another area where people have been asking questions and homeschooling has been around for a very long time. Homeschooling gives the, the parents the independence to educate their child as they see fit, recommended that they are following, um, the state. Not curriculum, because there isn't a curriculum, but the standards that we're expecting all students to have, but there's really no, um, firm monitoring of that. So there's a lot of independence for parents. There's a process for that. The district just has to account for all students of compulsory education. So, um, age, so we have an application, the homeschool parent becomes the coordinator and the teacher. And the parent does have to secure a private homeschool evaluation at the end of the year to ensure that the child met the goals that the parent had set. The child would receive a diploma from PDE stating that they were homeschool student. It's important to consider that in terms of other future educational choices. That a parent might need to make and that the student will make. Access to the curriculum and materials, we're, we're obligated to provide you with our curriculum documents as well as textbooks. But that's not, we don't have to provide more than that. Parents oftentimes join homeschooling consortiums where they're able to, um, coordinate services with one another. So the students would be in a pod or a cohort and one parent might teach one subject. They coordinate field trips, all of that type of stuff. So the kids get the socialization that they need. But the parents are also spreading the teaching and with their own expertise and comfort level across a broader range of, of individuals. As a school district, we, I've shared with you what we have to provide you with, but if parents are interested in this option. We're not prohibited from providing you with more resources and support to do that effectively. You know, we understand that, you know, right now there is a lot of trepidation in the community. And people want to make sure that they're keeping their, their children safe. And our job is to make sure that you have the resources you need in order to feel comfortable with, um, whatever the decision is that, that you'll make. So increasing health and safety is really our top priority here. We're looking at ensuring that students. And staff are practicing multiple precautions to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Masking, as I said, um, certainly because that's one of the most effective ways to keep, and things that an individual can independently do. To, um, protect himself, but more so to protect others that may be in near proximity. Social distancing, washing hands frequently and cleaning and sanitation. None of these measures in and of themselves will protect someone, but layered together, it decreases the chances of the spread. It eliminates some of the risk. The risk will always exist, but it eliminates some of it. So we're planning to include all of them within our health and safety plan, which, um, you know, certainly, um, will outline more deep, in more detailed fashion. What we need to do actually in the schools to implement this. The other thing that we are looking at is the air ventilation and filtration systems. So there's a good bit of research coming out about just the quality of the air and being able to remove the particulates. That spread any kind of germs and diseases. So that's more of a long-term solution to be able to continue to breathe more healthy air, even, you know, when this pandemic is finished. But we certainly will still have other flus and colds and viruses that, that move around in school. So, um, you know, we're putting efforts in that area as well. The other thing is that's really important is that during this time, if someone's feeling ill and has a temperature, it's best to stay home. And that's for staff and students alike. It doesn't mean that you, one has COVID or might test positive for COVID, but it is one of the symptoms that people do have. And I want to talk about that in just a couple of minutes as we go through what our, um, our plans will be. So face masks and face coverings are required for everyone inside the school. They will, they can be removed or lowered when students are six feet apart. That's coming from PDE's guidelines. Eating and drinking, seated at a desk, a workstation. And we'll have designated mask breaks where it's, it's a structured time that students will be at a minimum distance of six feet apart and they can have a break from the mask. Social distancing will occur in our classrooms, hallways, cafeterias, auditoriums, large space, instruction, gymnasiums. So we need to look at all of our space and think about our space in a different way to make sure desks are spread. That all classroom spaces really will just have the, the teacher's desk and the student's desk. A lot of the additional furniture may need to be stored or moved to be able to accommodate that. We are looking at the plexiglass shields. Um, they're, they're a protective measure. They're not, it doesn't mean that because of measure, that measure is there that we can take our mask down necessarily or be less than six feet apart. But it's one more layer, um, that decreases the chances of someone getting ill. We'll look at one-way hallways, will be a lot of signage with, um, marked and assigned seating. Placement of, you know, if we're standing in line, what six feet apart looks like, where the. where the desks need to be, because just by children sitting in them, they shift a little bit, but to make sure that we're lined up to that. And using outdoor spaces for instruction as much as we can and what's feasible given the space that's available. We're also reducing cafeteria seating and looking at additional lunch periods to be able to alleviate that. That does include sometimes the kids may be eating within their classrooms. And it's important for them to get up and have a change of scenery, but also, you know, to be thinking about the fact that this is the place where masks may be down and it's really important to make sure that we're more spread in the cafeteria. So it's, you know, rotating to make sure the whole grade level may not be in at the same time. Half maybe back in the classroom outside, the other half maybe in the cafeteria. So before kids come to school, we're asking the parents do the screening. And that is taking a temperature and just assessing if your child has any of the symptoms. And it, there is a form, we're not going to collect the form from the parents, but we're asking that you take the time to do that. And if your child is showing any of the symptoms, that you hold them back from school. And this is what's really important to remember that a lot of these symptoms, as you can see here, are symptoms of other things. So a fever and sore throat can easily be strep throat. Either way, that child needs medical attention. And, you know, once the physician sees the child and an antibiotic word, then that's a different story. The child will start to recover. We know at that point it wouldn't be related to a suspected COVID case. The nurse will take the temperature of the students if they develop symptoms during the day and there's a protocol for our nurses. And students arriving late will be screened just like our visitors. So anybody that's arriving late or any visitor coming into the building, we will have a health screening. And many of you may have experienced that if you've visited a doctor's office or anything like that where you're asked a series of questions and your temperature is taken. So if the symptoms do develop in school, the nurse will take the temperature. She will isolate the student and mask the student, contact the parents and let the parents know the child has to be picked up from school and advise that the child see the healthcare professional. Students may not return to school unless they've been symptom-free, including a fever, for seventy-two hours. The exception to this might be is if it is an acute illness like a strep throat and they're under treatment and they're feeling well enough, we know it's the strep throat and the child's coming back. We are looking at our attendance policies to be revised for the school or to be more flexible with this, because we recognize that staff and students may be staying home in that waiting period. Sometimes you just get a fever and nothing really materializes, but you don't know. We don't want kids being penalized for that in terms of their attendance. So we're looking at ways to be able to do that. This is the same procedure for our staff, so we'll be asking our staff to follow this as well. Many questions have come to us about what happens if we have a suspected or a positive COVID-19 case and what are the procedures and will people be notified? So Ms. Moser and I are the people who will be in contact with the Union County Public Office of Public Safety, Department of Public Safety, and we have a contact there. We would report that information or that information might be reported to us. But PDE has informed us and given us direction that we do not do any of the contact tracing. So it's not the school district's responsibility to decide who is quarantined, track down all the people that that person might have been in contact with, recommend testing. That goes to the office where their expertise is in doing this and they do this with other communicable diseases. So they have a procedure for this. In terms of our community knowing who that person is, what happened, if a teacher or student develops it, does the entire class have to be quarantined? That will depend on what the recommendations are and people would learn of that from the Department of Public Safety. That's, that's not a decision made by us. We also can't share individual information, especially medical history information about students or adults with anybody in the public. If there's a need to communicate something to the public, then we would do that in coordination with the Department of Public Safety and our solicitor. So, you know, just understand that there may be people who are out because of just regular illness. It doesn't mean that they possibly have COVID and I know that's where our minds will jump, but that, that's not the case. A little bit about contact tracing, what they look at is the length of the potential exposure. If mitigation techniques were used and if any symptoms are being displayed. That's, that's what that is and it's definitely case by case. It depends. So it isn't always a blanket answer, but that's the crux of their procedure. Quarantine is a period in which an individual is, you know, just remains isolated to find out if they're going to develop any symptoms. It doesn't necessarily mean that they have been tested. It doesn't, they may have been tested and waiting for the results, but it doesn't necessarily mean that. And of course, we would, you know, encourage everybody to follow any direction that they get regarding that. Transportation, so we're encouraging parents to drive their students to school and allow eligible students to drive. For middle school, naturally, that would be driving. We have received some questions. Each of these webinars are changing a little bit. I know as, as more questions are coming, just to let you know what we're doing. But in terms of walking and riding bikes to school, we're looking into that with the townships regarding their ordinances that might be enforced and what changes could be there. I can't promise anything on that yet, but you know, it is something we're going to look into as it's been a question asked by a few parents. Schools are still waiting for definitive social guideline requirements on buses from the Department of Education. So we don't have the, the actual numbers of spacing or anything along those lines. I don't know that we'll have them. That might be a change. That's an update in our plan when we do get them. But we will allow two kids to a seat for now. Family units can sit together. The bus drivers will have masks and face shields. Masks and face coverings have to be worn onto the bus while on the bus ride and when exiting the bus. Students will have assigned seats on the bus and we're going to structure the assigned seats in the, in the way that the students that are getting on first move towards the back of the bus and then the bus fills so that we don't have passage in the hall. And when students are unloading the bus, the reverse of that would happen. So we're trying to prevent that contact from happening as best as possible. Arrival and dismissal procedures, this will be different by school. But what we're looking to do is keep students from congregating either outside of school or once they're within the building. So they'll mostly be going directly to their classrooms. We're also going to look at how we can maybe stagger arrival and dismissal, working on that with transportation and even how, if we have many students that are being driven to school, how to be able to do that to alleviate some of the congestion as well as using other doors as opposed to just the main point of entry that we have to the schools. Instructional spaces will look very different. You know, as I said, we're really just going to have desks and that's pretty much about it within the classrooms. There, we're calculating the square foot of available space right now in each classroom to determine how many desks can fit in that classroom. That may necessitate us moving certain classes that just are larger to other spaces or switching classrooms. So those things are underway right now. They'll have portable desk shields, which again are another mitigation technique, but it, it doesn't mean just because they have those, they're safe. It's one more layer and there's, there's an image there of what they look like. Shared materials, we're going to limit or eliminate that. So wherever possible, students will have their own set of materials. If that isn't feasible, then students will wash their hands. Whatever that tool is that they use will then be cleaned and sanitized and students will wash their hands again afterwards. Large group spaces will be used as much as possible. It, it just allows kids a little bit more time and also the freedom of thinking of how close they are next to people. Specials like physical education, music, they may have to be modified, held in alternative spaces or even some of the activities that they do will be modified just because of the space issue. And students would never spend more than five times together in close proximity. So I think of this in a lab where they do as much as they can independently, but if they need to read an instrument or something of that nature, that they can be closed but masked and not for more than five minutes. Movement throughout the schools and personal needs, all of this will be different. Hallways will be one-way, stairwells, if there's a stairwell, would be one-way. They would still have access to bathroom and those spaces will be monitored for crowding. Backpacks, we're going to ask kids to keep everything in their backpack just so that we're not creating congestion at the lockers. A need to go to the locker and they'll have their materials with them. The water fountains will just have the touchless feature where the kids can put the bottle underneath and have the water fill. All the spigots will be disabled so that they can't put their mouths near the spigot to get water. Group seating will be modified for social distancing. Visits to the nurse, we're going to look at procedures for that where it's, it's a non-sick call that if a child needs Band-Aid or something like that, that there's another way that they can get those materials without being in the nurse's office, understanding that, you know, the nurses, there's a lot of burden on them with this and there may be sick kids there. So limiting the traffic will be really important. Visits to the office will also be limited. You know, I know many times kids have to call home because they forgot something or there's a change in plans after school. And, you know, in that case, we would have cellphone usage, but under the supervision of a staff member so that kids aren't using the cellphones in school for the reasons that we, we don't want them to because they can be distracting. But, you know, just thinking about putting that receiver up to your, your face that, you know, we want to make sure everybody's protected and including our staff that are using the phones. Cleaning and sanitation, so our schools are clean daily, classrooms, bathrooms. There are two shifts. There's the morning or the day shift and then there's the nighttime custodians that do a bulk of the cleaning. And we're going to increase our, the, the cleaning protocols that we have in place so that wiping down high-touch surfaces, using EPA-approved disinfectants and electrostatic sprayers and misters that allow the more surface area to be clean and particularly the hard-to-reach surface area. Bathrooms will be cleaned at least twice a day. Electrostatic misters will be used and, you know, I know there's some questions about what materials are sprayed and, and all that. We'll make that available, but we, we do have chemicals that would be food safe, so they could be used near food or in a cafeteria. So, you know, we're very much aware of that, that, you know, it's important to make sure that we don't create a secondary issue by using something caustic. Other technologies we're looking into in terms of the filtration of the air and students will only be using soap and water in a towel. We're not asking kids to use Clorox wipes on the desks. They're available for staff, but, you know, proper hand washing is the best thing the students can do as well too. If they won't be transmitting anything with their hands, if they're washing their hands and if they're washing their hands after they've touched something or if not washing, but using Purell or, or some kind of sanitation fluid, then that helps keep them safe. There will be a lot of signage around the buildings about proper hygiene, direction, remembering to stay socially distant, wearing a face covering. In all places, we'll be reminding kids about the expectations and taking deliberate time to walk them through what that looks like and to support them in really implementing that. Lunch, recess, masking and breaks. So while we don't have recess officially, but if we have any elementary parents, that still will be happening. We do need to wipe down balls and materials like that after use. But students will be seated six feet apart in lunch and this is important because their masks are down because they're eating and drinking. So again, we're reducing how many people are in the cafeteria at a time. Our menu selections are going to be modified so that they can be items that can be easily transported outside or to a classroom. Students will have masking breaks throughout the day. And, you know, those, the principals are in the process of coming up with the procedures for that because again, we might want to get into a space where kids can definitely be six feet or more apart from one another. And these are the times that PDE has said that we can allow kids to take those masking breaks, that what happened naturally besides an actual structured one, which we plan to do. Hand washing and sanitizing before and after lunch will be required as well. Other restrictions, so we're looking at all non-essential visitors, just limiting having additional people come to the building. We know that there is a need for parents to come in for a meeting or something along those lines and we understand that. But, you know, just looking at any extraneous people, which we already have procedures for. It's not easy to get into a school for safety reasons, but, you know, we're definitely paying attention to this because introducing more people into the environment, you know, definitely creates a greater risk. We would conduct that health screening as we would with the late arriving student. And everybody must wear a mask or a face covering. Volunteers will also be limited and principals are working on, on how they can scale some of their volunteer forces back and what that would look like and all the same mitigation strategies are in place for our volunteers as well. Field trips will be postponed where we can do clubs virtually, we will. But again, we're looking at not creating new environments where students who don't normally see each other through the course of the day in class are coming in contact with one another. So we can keep those cohorts most, more so intact. Facility use by outside groups will also be restricted. So we want our custodians in the evenings focusing on the cleaning and not setting up and breaking down for these different groups. And would also restrict guest speakers or move to a virtual platform in order to do that. So just to let parents know about some next steps before we start taking some questions. As I mentioned, the frequently asked question guide that will be an organic document as more questions come up, you know, providing those answers to the community and also sharing it to the different audiences that, you know, would need to know. We're looking at our website and providing parents with more resources and information on the website, particularly the guidelines that we're using to build the plan. And we will be surveying parents to see what their transportation plans are, whether kids can be driven to school or if we're planning where they're walking or whatever that might be, or if we're planning the bus ride, so we can start working on the seating. Also, we're asking parents, you know, to, at one point can commit and the survey would be coming out at the end of the week, but to make a commitment to the Lewisburg area school district so we can start that enrollment process, but also so that we know how many students and which students are returning to school for the purposes of scheduling. And we're looking to have a forum with, would be our local health and safety experts, a panel to be able to answer some of the questions, not just for school purposes, but also for your own personal interests as you're moving through the community. There's a lot of information out there. It's, it's very difficult to sometimes know what's the most recent or accurate. Researchers are learning about this disease daily and the more they learn, the more they have, they can share with us what we can do to keep ourselves safe. So at this time, if I could take some questions, I'll stop sharing. And Mr. Jones, and can I ask you to curate the questions?
Absolutely. The questions came in either through the Q and A or through the chat feature. I'll start with one and then work over to the other. Question is about students who choose the e-learning, if they are allowed to come in for a band or an orchestra or one of those extracurricular activities or co-curricular activities.
So right now it would be the after-school activities, anything that would happen after school. And that, that's, it's a really good question when we receive this, not just for the extracurriculars, but also for some select courses. And it's one of our challenges because if the e-school selected, we're introducing a new person that's not usually in the school or working with the kids to that activity. We also have some concerns about, you know, students, depending where things fall in the schedule, transportation may be an issue for the students to be able to do that. You know, it's one of the challenges that we have, that we want to keep kids connected to school. But what happens within the school day when everybody is in and then what happens with just a limited group after school where the students are meeting with, with just those students are two different things. And that may be us also taking a look at how, what our delivery model is for that. So we're still working through some of those details. We know that it's important for kids to have that time to socialize. And also it's just they enjoy it and they, they really get their, their identity and some of their friend group from kids that participate in, in the arts. So it's, it's one of the things we're continuing to look at.
What are the plans for transitioning students to the middle school from Lindtown? The sixth grade orientation?
So we're looking at the first day, the first student day of school to be all the students who would be new to the building. So that would be, you know, for Lindtown, it would be the third graders that were rising. So it would be our current fourth graders, our current sixth graders and our current ninth graders. They first of all miss their orientations, but they're also in a brand new building. So we're returning to school. It it's a very anxious time out there right now, and they're navigating a new building. It'll give them time to also understand the lay of the land in the building, where the office is, where the gym is, because on top of that, there's going to be one-way hallways or divided hallways or something along those lines that'll make it more challenging for them. So we're looking to have them come in the first day and then everybody else to return the second day, and that would be a modification to our calendar.
Are students not going to be allowed to use lockers?
We're not, but we're gonna have students use their backpacks and have all of their belongings with them. Um, and stay away from the lockers right now just because it creates that congestion, and there's no way for two students to go to the their lockers at the same time, get what they need and not be you know, definitely within a foot of each other.
Will students be required to use a mask or could they use a face shield?
So we're asking that all students wear masks. If there's a need for a student because of a health condition that they have, we do have a procedure for having a conversation with the family about what that might be. Masks are better than face shields. Our our teachers will have face shields, but they're also going to be far away from the students if you think of them standing in front of the class. But if they need to get closer and break six feet, we'd ask them to pull their masks up because that's the best way to protect um both people. Um, and and just the way students are moving about, teachers are are, let's say, moving through the building quite the way the students are, the ma- the mask could be cumbersome. But um, you know, we're looking at, you know, how to meet the students' needs, particularly if they have some sort of a medical need. Um, to make sure they're covered and protected as possible.
Uh, you did kind of touch upon this. Uh, middle school students um are moving to their classes rather than the teachers moving to them. And I'll also mention that, to the degree possible, try to keep the students in groups, but that doesn't always work, so the kids will be seeing other students.
Right. Where we can move the teacher to the student, um, that's something we'll look to do. It's a little easier to do in elementary. But not always. It depends on what the classroom materials are in the class. So if we're talking about a science class where there might be lab equipment or the kits that they use, that can't be transported back and forth, so ki- kids will need to to move. But we're looking at how to stagger that and also really be monitoring it so they're middle school kids, they're going to want to stop and talk to each other. But how to keep them moving so that they're also staying far far away from one another.
Some colleges are requiring testing before kids come on campus. Why are we not doing that?
Because it's, and it comes down, and I'm not an attorney, full disclosure, so I apologize. And if there is an attorney out there, tell me if I'm wrong. You have a choice to go to that college. You can select what college you go to. You don't have a choice in terms of what public school, brick-and-mortar public school you can attend. So um, one one has not yet challenged that in terms of an individual's rights. Um, they're also requiring kids to self-quarantine in their rooms for fourteen days. Um, and and colleges are in a different situation than where we are because kids are coming to live on campus. You know, th- they have a different level of exposure outside of just the instructional time that they have than our students do. Our students go home. Um, you know, many college kids are in dorm rooms or, you know, apartments, so that there's a different level of need, and they're kind of on their own, really, to be paying attention to all these social distancing and mitigation strategies. So I I don't know of any public schools that are requiring that at this time. It would be interesting to see. You know, what what would come of that if that happened. But that that isn't something we, I can't mandate that somebody, I have no authority to mandate somebody gets a test as well.
Uh, question about the e-school program. Um, could you maybe describe what it would look like for a typical middle school student?
And I'll let Ms. Moser answer that question.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Uh, we've used it with our middle school students um over the last several years, and the process is one of sitting down with the school counselor and looking at the courses that the student would take, were they in our school, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And then using the virtual courses that would best resemble those same courses. So an English language arts class, a social studies class, a science class, and a math class. And it has been our practice to offer students one choice of one additional related arts class. And then from those multiple vendor companies, there are some that are really appropriate for middle school-age students. Our our students do well with them. They enjoy the format and the setup uh with them. And so again, with the school counselor, the student's schedule is put in place of those courses.
Okay, um, the next question again relates to the music and the access to it, but also throws in question about the fall play, and we may answer other extracurricular.
Right. So we're we're really gonna take a look at um, you know, what the conditions are. Um, one of the issues that we do have with the play is we we can, you can think of those kids in a cohort and the play rehearsals that they do. To a degree, they can still be socially distanced, and it would have to be staged that way. Um, so a play would have to be selected that lends itself to that. The next issue that we have is the performance. So why schools can have in-person instruction where everybody else in the state can't gather more than twenty-five people indoors is that rule does not apply to schools for the purposes of instruction. It does, however, for meetings. Or anything that has to do with outside of instruction. So that was clarifying guidance that came out from the Department of Health just Friday, um Thursday or Friday last week. So the question would be the performance, and while we could think, well, we can record it and put it out to the community or broadcast it in some way, that comes down to the copyright laws and buying the cut the dis- distribution license that you would need in order to do that. So plays and musicals in general, like there there's still some investigating to do with that. It's one thing for the kids to do, to go through the activity of rehearsing a play, but if they can't do a performance, and there's no way to execute that. You know, that would have to be a decision we'd really have to make and and certainly would involve more people in in the feasibility of that.
I believe you answered this question, uh, the hybrid option, uh, how or the remote option, how LASD teachers would be uh would be utilized there. Um, there's another question about um other means of getting information for the e-school. And we can, um, I I know Mrs. Moser, you answered what the program would look like. Um, and you mentioned a sit-down with the counselor. Uh, depending on numbers, he may uh create a uh a virtual sit-down, um, so that it could be done in that way. This question came up a number of times. If a student is sent home and have to stay quarantined until they're symptom-free or fever-free for however many, uh seventy-two hours. Is there any option for remote learning while they're out?
So two things are for, what we would do is what we normally would do when a student's out. The teacher would gather up the work um and assignments, and the student would have time to make up any tests or anything like that that would happen. We're looking at, and there are districts where they've made a commitment to live streaming in class. One of the challenges with that is first, we need to have a policy in place, which we're in the process of moving through with policy. It it not just says we can do it, but it also gives some parameters about how it's done, what the students' responsibilities are, what the staff's responsibilities are. If there is a parent who does not want their child to be part of that Zoom in that classroom, then we wouldn't be able to do that. Um, and that would mean even that if it's, the Zoom is fixed on the teacher, assuming the teacher never moves out of that camera view. But the audio of other students would be picked up. If the parents uncomfortable with that for their child, and they say, no, I don't want zooming. I I get it that Johnny's home for three days, but I don't want that for whatever reason. Um, then we wouldn't be able to zoom into that class. So it's 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 depends answer. It's it's a great solution for any child really that that's out with an illness in normal times, but um it it it's not something we can apply in every situation.
Um, I can answer this one. Uh, will students who are parent drop-off still wait in groups outside or then inside before reporting to homeroom? Um, what we're trying to do is have the students come off the bus, go straight to their homeroom. Students who are uh dropped off by parents, they would come in a different door and go straight to their homeroom. So we ask that the timing of drop-offs for parents is within ten or fifteen minutes of when homeroom is supposed to start. So that helps with the kids uh gathering together. It also answers a couple of questions that came up about the security issues involved with multiple doors. Um, the doors, the two main entrances to the building for students in the morning are both staffed by um by staff members. So they're not just doors left open. Um, their kids are still being let into locked doors in the morning. So I I don't know if that helps. Will students change classes or remain in one class? In in the middle school, it's primarily changing classes. There's a question about another Zoom Town Hall meeting that would allow parents to like have a walkthrough in each building.
That's, that's an interesting idea. It's something we haven't thought of. I I can certainly, I can talk with the principals about that. Just to, it's one thing to describe it, but it's, I think what you're asking is to be able to see it. And um, you know, so what does that look like? The cla- uh, seeing a picture of a classroom that is one of our classrooms, a before and after, what it would have looked like last year and what it looks like now. So you can gauge your comfort level based on what you see. I I think that's, that's definitely something that we can do.
Um, will desks be sanitized between classes?
So we would ask that students are washing their hands or sanitizing their hands. Um, more so than the teacher or the student actually cleaning off the desk for for two reasons. First, in order to get the ninety-nine percent killed kills germs as advertised on a Clorox spray, as an example. It has to sit on that surface for up to twenty minutes, and that's the fine print that's in there. So even by wiping something down with the Clorox wipe, we're not necessarily killing all of the germs. I mean, certainly, we're getting some. Um, and this is how this has been explained to me also by our health experts from Geisinger and Evangelical. It it's not something that I I knew. I mean, quite honestly, I thought, okay, well, with a Clorox wipe, we're good to go. Not necessarily. Um, you have to give it time to be activated. So by the kids washing their hands and sanitizing their hands and their mask, then we're mitigating how much is actually hitting that surface, and the students then are also protecting themselves from what.
Since students are moving to different rooms uh between periods, how will they be kept socially distance distant while transitioning between the classes? And for me, that's up to my supervision and how the teachers monitor the hallways as well. Can you speak to any more uh specific changes that students can experience or will experience at the middle school? I could try to delve into just a few of them. First off, their kids won't be uh using lockers at least the beginning of the year, um and they'll be asked to bring their materials either under their arm or in a backpack. So things like cellphones, which have chronically been an issue at the middle school. Uh, the kids would, instead of having the cellphone often in their locker, it would be often in their backpack. Um, and we're not gonna ask kids to share the phone in the office if at all possible. Um, they would bring their cellphone to the office or uh make the phone call in 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 class with the supervision of a teacher. One other thing that um is kind of a big change is that DASH won't happen this year, at least at the beginning of the year. It's our after-school homework uh plan, but usually requires kids taking a bus, a late bus home, and I can't see us figuring out how to get our middle school students on the Lindtown bus after DASH. So we'll have a regular dismissal. You mentioned already that kids, when they come into the building, go straight to their homeroom, they will likely eat their lunches in their homeroom with their homeroom kids, um and they'll dismiss at the end of the day likely from their homeroom. Um, they'll have these um plastic dividers that we're looking at getting. Um, and that's something that they'll have to take care of and carry with them from class to class rather than leaving them in their classroom. So at the end of the day, they'll drop them off in their homeroom. And then when they come back in the morning, there will already be waiting for them. Those are primarily the the major ones. Clubs and activities, that came up. Um, we're probably not gonna be able to do clubs and activities in the middle school within the framework of the day like we have in the past. That will have to come uh later on in the school year. All right. For uh an e-learning student on free and reduced lunch, will there be a way for them to pick up a lunch?
So that's what, one of the things we'll have to work on because they're certainly entitled to that and how we can work through that. I mean, what we've done over the summer to be able to provide those meals. Um, naturally, our principals are going to be in the buildings for that delivery. I don't know if we can set up a pickup option or there's another alternative way, but we can certainly work with our our folks in food service on on how to do that. That's a good question.
Will chorus or singing, and I'll throw in band and orchestra uh in general, will it be permitted? And I worked with, I had a Zoom meeting with the uh Mr. Jones, Mrs. Tidy, and Mrs. Eishide earlier this week about this very topic, and what we're hoping to do is split the larger combined seventh and eighth grade groups into either a seventh grade group and then an eighth grade group rather than having all of them together. And take advantage of the larger spaces that we have in the building. So chorus may uh might be for seventh graders. Um, and they'll be singing on the bleachers in the gym rather than on the risers in the chorus room. The band might be playing in the cafeteria, which will now be empty because we're eating lunches in the classroom, so they can take advantage of a larger space there. So other than that, I believe those are being permitted, um but won't be exactly the way it has been in the past. Um, has the first day of instruction been decided yet?
It's the first day in the calendar day. Ms. Moser, for students, it's which day?
Twentieth of August.
So um, we have some professional development days before that with our staff. So the only thing that may be changed with that is whether we would just be bringing in those um sixth graders for their orientation that didn't occur, but also an additional orientation in the building.
Uh, what is the school policy to enforce mask-wearing if a student refuses to wear it or breaks policy? And what support will the teachers have?
Right. So it this, it would work this way. I mean, first, it's talking with the student about why he or she isn't wearing a mask. Gentle reminders, motioning, let's put the mask up, that kind of thing. And if they're compliant, then that's fine. Um, if the student is having refusing, all-out refusal, they're they're refusing a direction that they've been given. So they would then be talking to the principal about that. And again, this is now where we might get parents involved with, it's important to be able, you know, to keep everybody safe, and all the ways that we would try and help the child understand that their action has an impact on other people. And see if we have compliance there. And if it goes beyond that, then it would rise to my level with all parties involved. And you know, we would have some discussion if this is just a personal, the student doesn't want to wear it out of defiance, or or a parent is instructing a student to to be in the schools. Um, we're looking at our existing policy um in terms of code of conduct and some other areas that would bright-line, that would have the authority to look for another venue to be able to provide instructions to the student, but it wouldn't be within the school. And the same goes with staff.
Okay. Under what conditions would the school district consider moving to the hybrid remote options? Can you explain how that decision process would work?
Right. So what we're preparing for, and we saw this with the governor's um order once um businesses were able to operate at a fifty percent capacity, that being reduced to twenty-five. And that was bars and restaurants um in ter- in terms of indoor seating and bars eliminated um without any kind of food. So we're looking at, as the governor is naturally getting a lot of pressure from a lot of different parties on the reopening of the school and all the vagities that still exist out there for people that we're all working through. It it's very possible that we could end up in a situation where we're ordered, instead of going remote, that we must have It, it's very possible that we could end up in a situation where we're ordered, instead of going remote, that we must have only fifty percent of our capacity in the building at a time. And that would be something that we're prepared to do. Also, if the conditions change in Union County in terms of the, the spread and the affection that we're seeing in the community. And that decision is really made with the local um, public safety department as well as our medical experts between the two hospitals. What would really be best? And, and again, that depends, it depends what people are actually um, coming down with the illness and what that severity would be. So you know, we want to have a plan for it because we don't want to plan in the middle of actually executing a school year. But um, we want people to be aware of what that is. In particular, our elementary parents, because they need to make some decisions if, um, you know, they need to look for childcare for their students if they were going to be remote. They would still need to do that if they're in e-school. But you know, they're, they're at least, they have, they have the information they need to start making some decisions.
Uh, question, could a teacher not wear a microphone during a live screen, uh, stream so no student audio would be picked up?
If they did that, then the, I, I think the ambient noise would still be picked up, even if they weren't mic'd. I understand what their amplifying sound systems that they have. It oftentimes isn't louder for the students in the room. It's, it's slightly louder, it's more to help those students who have a hard, hard, hardness of hearing or deafness or some degree of that. It, it's a little more complicated technology.
Point, yes, I, I do know um, that there are still questions in the chat. I'm going to get through the Q and A first. This question is, and, and you already answered it, Dr. Polenchak, about um, desks being wiped down, what students may use and might not be able to use and the effectiveness of it. But the question is, um, can you make students sanitize their hands as they enter each class? And what I'll say is that the custodians here in the middle school have already installed, I think, ten additional uh, hand sanitizer stations in the public areas and in the hallways. And each room will have a minimum of one hand sanitizer and all but I think one classroom has a sink and a hand sanitizer station in it. He's also, uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Gallegos is getting um, portable hand sanitizer stations as well. So yeah, that's part of the protocol is making sure that kids keep their hands clean and do it as often as is comfortable, um, as often as we can. This is getting a little bit further down the road, but um, will, without lockers, will students be carrying their coats? And their lunches and their musical instruments as well?
Yeah, so I mean, we'll, we'll certainly work on, they, they probably would carry their coats in terms of their lunches where, where they were classroom, they would be in at the time of lunch. There might be a drop off where I can envision one of those milk crates and all the lunches that need to go to that classroom are there. We can work out a procedure because that's, I get it, there's a lot of things for kids to carry, there's a lot of things to get smushed. And then, you know, not be edible or usable by the time that, you know, the child's sitting down to eat lunch. So you know, those are all those types of things that when we're, we have kids in the building and we're looking at those little logistical tweaks, they'll, they'll continue to change and evolve. And, and you know, I have to say too, when our teachers are in the buildings too, you know, we're trying to imagine everything to think of. They will have also from their vantage point, you know, some suggestions or things to point out that we can, we can implement.
To be clear, there will be no cost to the parents associated with the LASD e-school? Or should they select a cyber charter school?
So there's no cost to the parents for either. The difference is there's a cost for the e-school that is about, I would say, it, overall, it's probably about four thousand to five thousand dollars a student. I would say, I'm guesstimating the amount, it breaks down into all these fractional amounts. For the cyber charter school, it would cost the district between fifteen and twenty-four thousand. And again, that depends on the grade level and whether or not the child has an AP. The modes of delivery, in, in all honesty, are not going to be much different. They're, they're both asynchronous. You know, how, how the teacher interacts with the student, it, that varies from cyber charter schools. But um, there, there isn't a wild degree of difference. The only wild degree of difference is you, you will definitely have a certified teacher with our e-school. You may or may not with the cyber charter.
Uh, how do we obtain a copy of the curriculum for in-person teaching? Uh, has anything changed in the normal curriculum due to the current political climate?
So that curriculum has not been touched. I mean, and in terms of curriculum, we're saying, talking about the political climate, all curricula in, in turn will be revised. To, to address in the subject-specific area ways, those issues of social justice and equity. And some curriculum more so than others, so certainly perhaps social studies more so than maybe something like a home economics. But um, you know, that, that work has not occurred yet. Now, I'll be honest with you in that, that hasn't, that is at the forefront. And just one hour before our meeting today, we, I met with the secondary teachers. And that was a question that they raised, you know, wh- when are we going to begin this, this conversation, professional development? Everything that we need to do to build our capacity to be able to work with the students and really look at, you know, what we're presenting and how we're doing it. And how to make sure we're not marginalizing any one group of people and being more inclusive.
Will I be informed if another student purposely coughs on my own child?
So um, if, if, in terms of if it happened and there's a health risk um, to that, then yes. Who the student is that did that, we will not tell you. I'm sure your child would be able to tell you. If a child is doing that on purpose to um, scare or intimidate or create a hazardous situation, that child's going to be disciplined. There, there was a case where a lady intentionally coughed all over a whole bunch of vegetables or something like that in a grocery store. And she was arrested and charged. Now, I'm not saying we're going to arrest and charge our students, but they will be disciplined for that. I mean, that's, that's just like, you know, I would take it as if you're spitting on somebody, you just don't do that. And you know, again, you know, the discipline, you know, to, you know, again, when I say discipline, it, it can be, I would think, you know, and I don't want to get in specifics, but it can be a range of things. From losing a privilege of some sort or um, you know, a very, very um, stern conversation. I'm not saying either one, which would happen in that, I'd leave that to the principal.
Masks need to be worn and this question has come up quite a few times. Uh, I am concerned about the heat in the non-air-conditioned building combined with wearing a mask all day. Have you considered AM-only instruction until the weather breaks? I'll throw that.
So one of the questions I asked, you know, when I came to this district is that um, and this was since July one, do we do early dismissals for heat? Some school districts um, that do that when it, the temperatures are really high, either in the spring, late spring, because some school districts go well into June. Or in the beginning of the school year, it gets too untenable, do we have early dismissals? And that's not something that's going to practice here within the district. It is a, a concern that's been voiced um, by a number of parents. And you know, one of the things we don't know yet is exactly what the weather is going to be like. I think it's on our minds now because it hasn't been, except for today, under ninety degrees and sometimes a hundred. But we really don't know what the temperatures are going to be like. And you know, we're going to keep in mind that everybody has to be comfortable. And besides just their comfort, the behavior that all children will have when they're uncomfortable will start to change. So we'll look at that. If we end up with, you know, a hundred plus degree temperatures at the end of August or into September, you know, what is it that we can do? I know what we've done in the past, but we might need to do something differently this time because of these, these conditions.
Are there still uh, school resource officers in all buildings? Did the LASD increase the number of officers?
No, that's exactly the same.
And yes, we do have a, a school resource officer, uh, school police officers, uh, two that split um, their shifts at the middle school and the Lindtown. And then another that uh, is high school in Calhoun. What provisions for outdoor spaces have you begun to implement or plan, awnings or tents or chairs, things like that?
I, I just want to let everybody know, if we didn't get to your questions, is this will be the last one, only because Zoom is going to cut us off, because this was scheduled for an hour and fifteen minutes. We are looking at um, what outdoor spaces are available. And we're, we're taking a look at what some of the costs are to put up some of these structures. We have to be careful because when school's in operation, it's not necessarily like putting the tent up like you may for a picnic in your backyard. There are some laws that we have to follow about how things are secured. Because if somebody's injured, then there's a liability on the part of the district for that. So you know, we are looking at that. Most of it really is, you know, cost and installation and whether or not that would be something that's feasible. So you know, we, we understand if we're outside, it also can be really hot and, and the sun's beating down or other elements could be a problem. But um, you know, I do want to thank everybody for their, their time this afternoon. I know I wouldn't have gotten to all of your questions, but you know, certainly they're, they're in the chat. And um, please feel free to email myself or Ms. Moser. Um, I'm getting back to parents as, as fast as I can between the Zooms. So it may take a day or two to hear back from me, but we'll put everything into an FAQ. So that you have those answers and as new questions come up, you know, and you'll be informed of when things have been revised. So you can check that out and what those changes are. So um, thank you again, and um, I hope that you have a pleasant afternoon.
Thank you.